This, here we go, okay. All right, good morning, everyone. This has been an unbelievably challenging time. There has been one thing happening and then another and then another. And I'm thankful that I can see some blue skies out my window. I hope everybody has some blue skies that they can see and we're having better air to breathe. There's, you know, in top of these challenges that we're facing in our environment, there's all of our personal lives, what's happening with ourselves, with our own health, with our family, with our loved ones. So just taking a moment to acknowledge that this is exceptionally difficult. And growing up here in the United States, I haven't experienced war in, like, I haven't lived through a war. I've read about it, I've seen movies about it. But I think this is, this sustained day after day, month after month, with no clear end in sight is kind of what it feels like. So I just want to start out by saying lots of grace for each of us, but start with yourself because if we're graceful with ourselves, we can more be graceful with others. Okay, so I'm going to start sharing my screen. And I think I need to get this in presentation mode, so please. Okay, does it right now, are you seeing just the main screen without all of little tiles on the side? If I could have a few nods of the head, yes, thank you very much. Okay, so welcome to Courageous Conversations. We're going to go around and introduce ourselves as the hosts. And we have four, I believe, four out of six of us here today. So I'm Sally Snyder. I'm Rhodes Community College's Coordinator of Diversity Programming. And Jenny, will you go ahead and introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Jenny Jackson. I am Advisor of Student Government typically on Redwood Campus and happy to be here, welcome.
Thank you. And Reverend Ernestine? Let's see, Ernestine is muted at the moment. Let's go ahead and go to Tom.
Then I better be unmuted then. So hi, I'm Tom Berry. I am the pastor at Bethany Presbyterian Church.
Great, thank you, Tom. And Ernestine, she probably had to get pulled away for a moment or maybe she's having internet connections, but she's here too. And we all take turns speaking. We work on this together, planning for it. And then we take turns on who's going to talk about what. Sometimes, I mean, I've gotten some feedback where it seems like only white people are talking. We want to hear from people of color. And so we'd just like you to know that we are taking turns with this. And we're also welcoming your suggestions on whatever you'd like to see more of. Or if you haven't seen it all, please send us your suggestions. Let's see. Our mission is to enrich, support, and celebrate our diverse community by acting as a catalyst for inclusion, continuous learning, understanding, and acceptance through active engagement and facilitation of educational opportunities that challenge biases and deepen conversations. And we have a lot to cover today, but I still really like to highlight this quote by Tracy Powell. "We need to respect and embrace difference, but we also need to look at what we have in common. One is as important as the other." We're a global community now and people around the world have the same struggles when facing bigotry. So Zoom etiquette, we're all getting pretty good at it, but please mute your microphone unless you're speaking. Try to stay as stationary as possible. But if you need to walk around or get some exercise, just turn your video camera off, do some stretching. Please don't eat on camera. And if you would like to join the conversation, you can utilize the chat or raise your hand. The chat function works really well. There is a virtual raising of the hand because we can't always see you when we have the screen sharing happening. And if my other hosts could be watching the chat, I can't see it at the moment. So let me know if something pops up and just pop in with me. So our ground rules, I really want to emphasize these ground rules because we need them here right now and we need them in our everyday life. So these have been adapted from the Conversation Cafe. And please think of them now. And whenever you're in a conversation, especially one that gets heated, bring these into mind. So keeping an open mind, being curious, listening to all points of view, suspending judgment as best you can. Being respectful. I always say, you know, we don't have to agree on things, but we do need to be respectful. We need to require that of each other. And then the seek to understand rather than to persuade or convert. I'll get back to that one in a moment. Discovery, question old assumptions. Look for new insights, that's how we grow. Go for honesty and depth, but don't go on and on. It's always my hard one. And speak only for yourself about what has personal meaning. So avoid saying, "Well, I heard," or "My friend did this," but let's just talk about our own things. So our objectives here, I'm going to try to go through these a little quicker. Discuss systemic oppression. Create an awareness of our local history with racism and other forms of prejudice. Expand our circle of knowledge. Create community accountability. Network with people who are different than us. Share and spread new ideas. And generate a community of caring and mutual respect. And finally, give us courage. So I'm going to stop screen sharing just for a moment because I am, so much is going on, but I want to check my notes too because I don't forget anything. So we have this listed on our Facebook page, on our Rhodes Community College Facebook page. And we've had 100-plus comments on there. And there's quite a few that are ugly, I'll have to say. And it's disturbingly ugly. And it's the reason we're having these conversations. If there weren't those ugly comments and those ugly thoughts and feelings, we wouldn't need to have this. So that's exactly why we're having this meeting and these conversations. And why we're encouraging you to keep having them in your own families, with friends, with coworkers, with neighbors, with people in the grocery store. I find on the comments that happen on a Facebook post or on social media, they tend to be very polarized, like we're seeing so much of. And I'm, they really usually don't get people to move one way or the other. People have their mindset, they're going to stick with it. And I haven't ever seen somebody go, "Oh, you're right. Oh, I should change my way of thinking." They typically just dig into whatever they have and they're just not even listening to the other part, which is sad. So going back to that ground rule that I said about, or that we have about not seeking to convert, but really be open and opinion, try to find your common ground. I think we agree on a lot of these things. Let's explore where we don't. And let's see where we can go with that. But being respectful at all times, no matter if you don't agree. Excuse me, I'm just seeing Ernestine is coming back. So we'll get her back in the room here. So we talked about, like, what do we want to do with these ugly comments on the Facebook posts? We thought we need to leave them because while we don't want to leave, we don't want to be spreading untruths. We do want to encourage getting these conversations going and showing the need for them. Like, I showed my children and explaining because they don't understand necessarily where this is coming from. This is why we need this. And we are here for the people who want to learn and the people who want to expand their knowledge and the people who want to push forward a greater humanity. So thank you all for being here. And if any of you have been responding on those conversations, thank you for responding. I would like to, but I'm staying, I'm staying out of it as a neutral person to not, well, I'm going on and on. I'm going to stop, moving along. This does grow our heart as a community. Ernestine, are you, do you want to, we lost you for a moment. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I did. My name is Ernestine Flemster and I'm the priest at St. Luke's Episcopal Church here. Well, I'm not sitting here in Brent's Pass, but I live, but he's not in Brent's Pass. Welcome, good to be here.
Thank you. All right, and I think I wasn't on speaker view before and I am now. So let's go back to our slideshow. And get me on track. Okay, so we went through our objectives. And next, we're going to talk about unpacking white privilege. And there's a lot of confusion about what this means and what it doesn't mean. So we're going to be talking about that. People's feathers really get ruffled. People get scared, people get defensive, people get angry. And it makes people highly uncomfortable. It can make people highly uncomfortable. So we want this to be a safe place that we can talk about our questions to dialogue about this. And it's okay if you don't know everything. I'll be the first to admit, I don't know everything. I'm learning all the time. So we are here to figure out how we can interrupt these patterns, how we can identify them, how we can interrupt them, and how we can move forward. So now, Tom, do you want to take over with some of this right now? I feel like I can't remember. I think you're going to talk about the definitions, yes? Oops, you're muted.
Yes, we can. Okay. Was that part of Lunta's too? I don't want to step, I know he's.
Lunta's not able to join today.
So yes, I could do that. I just want to make sure, I can't remember if I was supposed to come before or after Lunta and/or Ernestine though. So there's that embarrassing pause as I wait to see what Ernestine says.
So I know one of the things we wanted to ask for in the chat.
Go ahead and I know we were going to talk about, start with defining privilege and take that into the idea of white privilege.
Yes, and so, and I'm realizing, in the chat, if you would, what do you think of when you think of privilege? And I'm actually, I'm going to stop screen sharing for a moment and just have a little conversation here.
And then Sally, while you're doing that with the chat, I'm happy to, you know, we talked as leaders about the definition of privilege itself and then putting that side by side with white privilege. And I'm happy to.
And I've got, I've got the slides that have those definitions. So first, we apologize, everybody, with, I'm going to say with the fires, that set us all a little bit sideways. And so what we'd like to ask in the chat is if you could type in, what do you think of when you think of privilege? Just privilege, any type of privilege. And if you're not typing it in, just in your mind, think about what comes to mind when you think of what is privilege. A privilege is fill in the blank. And you can just put words in the chat. Inequity. I think a privilege of advantage that I have that I did not necessarily, advantage that I have that I did not necessarily earn. Something not earned. And what does, I, let's just, go ahead, Ernestine?
I was reading the.
Okay, oh.
Definitions. You want me to read them?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, first one, I think of privilege as advantage that I have that I did not necessarily earn. Something not earned, unearned advantage. Things we take for granted, opportunity, opportunity, choice, not available to everyone, jump into the front of the line, preferential treatment, the opposition of discrimination, unearned benefits given to a group just because they are part of a certain group. Unearned advantage, something we are allowed to do without doing anything to earn it, privileged.
Thank you. Okay, so Ernestine, if you'll continue.
Okay, I, well, I think for me, the, okay, what happened to all those definitions?
Let's see, so I'm going to put them up here.
You're moving, okay.
Yep, and so we'll go through, I'll have you go through the definitions of privilege and then you can go through and talk about what it means to you.
Is a special right, advantage, or immunity granted or available only to a particular group or person or group. Synonyms, advantage, right, benefit, prerogative, entitlement, birthright, due, concession, freedom, liberty. And so I think we have the general advantage of privilege. And I agree with, I agree with all of them. And then we, when we put the word white in front of it, white privilege, I think we are beginning to see the distinction. White privilege is inherent advantages possessed by a white person on the basis of their race in a society characterized by racial inequity and injustice. And I think for me, it's the, there's a lot of misunderstanding surrounding white privilege. There's a lot of resistance to what white privilege means. And I think one of the things that I hear a lot in that when I'm having conversations is that people think, "Well, I don't have white privilege because I'm not rich and I don't have this and I don't have that." And I think that the distinction here is not that white privilege automatically gives you wealth, but it gives you, from just from the mere fact of being white, it gives you an advantage over all the other groups that live in this society. So one of the easiest ways I can think about defining white privilege is when you go to a store, and this has happened to me personally, people are not, people are not following you around. Even if you're just, you're just in there to browse, you notice that the store attendants are following you around. They're always asking you, "Did you find everything you want? Did you need it?" And they're not asking anybody else about it. And for me, one of the, one of the things that defines white privilege, and I think in this time when we're experiencing so much upheaval over racial inequities, is the, what we refer to in the African-American community as the conversation. European-Americans don't have to have conversations with their children about encounters with law enforcement or people in authority. I think every, every African-American child has that conversation. And I think it's getting, they're having, parents are having to have that conversation at an earlier and earlier age because it's gotten so bad. And so we say we have to have a conversation with our children, especially. We used to say especially with our young men, but now this is showing that black women are having, are starting to have as many encounters with police officers that end in violence and that in jail and that in circumstances that you would not expect if you were European-Americans or if you're a white American. And I think for me, it is the, it is something that for European-Americans and white Americans, it's like breathing air. It's something that happens to them from the time they are born that they don't really recognize it. They don't really acknowledge it and they don't really understand the ramifications that it brings in society. So I think when you say, "I don't have white privilege," and I say, "Yes, you do because you're white." And so that automatically gives you a privilege over me and over my children and over my, my, my families.
Thank you, Ernestine. So another, another way to put what she just said is, and it's often heard, white privilege doesn't mean your life hasn't been hard. It just means the color of your skin isn't one of the things making it harder. So we are going to go into a group activity. And Tom, do you have the directions ready to talk about it?
Yes, that I do have.
Okay.
And I'm going to try to give kind of an abbreviated breakdown on this because we do want to make sure we get, especially with large, it looks like we're going to have larger breakout groups, so we want to give ourselves plenty of time. But this privilege, this activity, this privilege for sale, and we're going to show you a list. And we got this from, we did not make this up. We borrowed this from Social Justice Toolbox, I believe, is where we got this from. And but what we're going to try and do here, we're going to give you a list of 20 privileges. And we need, first of all, when you're in your groups, we need you to look at those lists, but also assume that you have none of those. I mean, the idea is to understand what privileges we do have. But for the, for the, for the, for this activity, we're going to assume that we have none of those. And your group is going to be given, theoretically given, or make-believe $400. Each of these privileges costs you $100. So if you're figuring this out as we go, as a group, you're going to have to try to decide what the top four privileges that you think would be worth spending your money on. And one thing I want to note is that privileges, most of these privileges can be, can be seen as something that either you would enjoy or benefit from or not because of your race, because of the color of your skin. But it's not limited to that. You're going to notice other privileges that you might think, "Well, that doesn't have anything to do with whether I'm white or not." And that's true because we're looking at white privilege, but privilege is privilege. And we need to understand that, you know, it doesn't just happen in this, you know, in this neat little box. So I believe in just a few minutes here, we're going to break you into these groups. There should be, if we're doing this, Sally, we're doing this, we'll be in fours, so there'll be one of us in each group.
I think we're able to, let's see. We're able to go into bigger groups, I believe. Sarah, do we have a link for the document?
Okay.
Let's see if we do. So while you're, I'll give a few directions. We realized we had a few less hosts than we thought we were going to have and we have a document that we need you to have. So we thought we, hopefully, we can share that link so everybody can access it. But when you're in the room, I guess if we're going to be bigger, we might not have time to go around and introduce ourselves, but I still think it would be nice. So we're going to try to give you about 20 minutes in the room. Take the time to introduce just your, at least your name, who you are. And it's going to be random, where you are, wherever you land. And while you're there, you're going to, like Tom said, you're going to have $400 as a group, not just one of you, $400 each, but as a group, $400. And so that means you get to pick four of the privileges out of 20 that you get, which means the other 16, you don't get to enjoy those privileges. And Sarah, yay. Okay, so everybody, if you could go to the chat room. Not everybody has to be able to do this, but if we could have one person who is able to share their screen, then we will be able to. And I'm going to show you what we're talking about if I can get my thing to advance. There we go. So these are, is everybody seeing my list of 20? Is that what's showing on the screen right now? Yes, good. So if you go to the chat from Sarah Bristol, there is a link to this list. So if you're able to click on that link right now, you'll have that for yourself. Or if a person in the room, if you don't have one of us as a host in there, that way you can share the screen and you can see the list. So I'm going to be breaking up the room soon. You're going to have about 15 to 20 minutes to talk about what four privileges are you all going to decide on as a group consensus to be able to do this. Does that make sense? I'm going to go to, stop sharing. I'm going to go to gallery view for a moment and see if I can see some nods of heads. People feeling like they get it? Thank you for your grace, everyone. Okay, we are going to do breakout rooms. Ready, okay. And about 15, 20 minutes, we'll give you a couple-minute warning before we come back. Sally!
Yay! Join, this looks a little smaller, so I thought I'd come in.
Nice.
I'm really struggling today, everyone, so thank you.
It's okay. You're fine.
It all made sense when I put it together and then I got in front of it, I was like, "Uh, what are we doing?" So should I share my screen, would that help?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead. We just did our hellos.
Oh, good.
I had someone on the phone, but we weren't able to, I don't, we didn't speak to them.
Okay, I'm going to unmute them for a moment because I can do that as the host. No, I can't. I can't.
Interesting.
It is.
Is this anybody's phone number?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Hey.
Hi.
Hi, this is Lucia from HR. I'm commuting from Riverside back to Brent.
Lucia, yay. Okay, so Lucia, we also have, is it Ty?
Yes.
Ty, and Donna, and Teresa. So there's six of us here.
Nice to meet you, Lucia.
And let's see, so I was going to get, oh, and it looks like we dropped her. Okay, so you've all introduced yourselves. I don't want to talk too much, I've already been talking a lot. So I'm going to share the screen.
This is a, this is a pretty detailed list.
Yes, it'll take a while just to absorb it. So we're supposed to pick four that we're willing to purchase?
Yeah, so as we go through, I mean, we could read through them and like, everybody take turn reading them. And then if you have a comment you want to add to it, feel free.
Okay, I'll start reading. Number one, inheriting land from your family ancestors after their death.
Using facilities such as gym locker rooms and store change, store changing rooms without stares, fears, or anxiety.
Being able. You can go.
Okay, being able to receive medical care, including emergency medical care, without worrying that your identities affect the quality of care that you receive.
Having multiple positive TV role models.
And I'm not going to talk for a little bit. Go ahead, Teresa.
Oh, reading books or seeing movies where you share identities with the characters.
Raising children without worrying about state intervention.
Feeling unthreatened and safe in your interactions with authority figures and police officers.
Raising children without worrying about family, friends, community, rejecting your children because of your identity.
Being able to attain a job that offers paid health insurance to cover necessary medical treatments you need.
Having access to medical care anytime I want because I have health insurance.
Being able to travel without worrying about your safety due to your identities.
Really being able to discuss your relationships with others.
Being able to be a foster parent.
Applying for a job, promotion without worrying your name or identities will hold you back.
Being employed as a preschool or elementary school teacher without people assuming you will corrupt their children.
Receiving validation and acceptance. Turn your religious, I'm muted.
Living openly with your partner.
Being accepted by your neighbors, colleagues, and new friends.
Being able to call, access social services without fear of discrimination.
Being able to obtain child custody.
Wow.
Those are pretty deep.
Yeah.
This is real sobering.
I'm muted, there we go. So it's Sally again.
I start a few of these. Number three seems really important to me because that's life and death.
I have that on my list also.
Yeah.
So I picked, just as we were going down, I jotted the ones that really resonated with me. Number three, number eight, number nine, and 14.
Ty, what are you thinking?
I was thinking definitely three, um, seven, hmm, 17, and maybe, hmm, 14? Just ones that I personally would love to be able to pay for.
It's, you know, and even, I, I'm looking at, um, in just number one. Because so much of the privilege I enjoy is because my family, I mean, I, my family owns land and I was given an inheritance when my grandmother passed away, which allowed me to get a house. And so much of the quality of life I enjoy is because of that. And if I, if I didn't have parents who went to college and grandparents who were able to give me an inheritance, I wouldn't live this comfortable life I'm leading at all. And that's, I mean, like, is that something I want to give up? No, I don't. I mean, I, I fully recognize that that's a huge privilege I have.
Yeah, there's a, um, I've been thinking lately, it's not even on the list, but I've been thinking about how low interest rates are right now. And my husband and I are looking to get a loan to do some home improvements. And it's like, yeah, we're, we're, we're lucky to be still working. I'm working and he has a guaranteed income. And we have a house. And if we didn't have this house, we wouldn't be able to get this loan. And if we didn't have this income, we wouldn't be able to get this loan. So I'm thinking this kind of makes the gap wider because there's so many people who are essential workers or who are unemployed. And they can't take advantage of these low interest rates now. So the wealth gap grows in times like these.
So I'm not going to say how we're going to pick these. I'm going to let you all figure out. We have a small group. We're lucky.
So. Should I go ahead and tell you the ones I picked?
Yes.
So three is, I agree with, uh, six. I, I focused on because if, you know, the hope is to become a good ancestor. And recognizing that there are still, we still are in this country where children are born into privilege. You know, raising children without worrying about state intervention is a privilege. Twenty, able to obtain child custody. Again, that's a privilege. And then, um, 15, oh, that's because I used to teach. But I remember, you know, I didn't, I didn't have to deal with that barrier. I didn't, you know, but I imagine I, if I was brown or black, that I would have had to deal with that. So.
I'm trying to remember the numbers that we all highlighted. So Donna, what numbers did you highlight?
Three, eight, nine, 14.
Okay. And Ty, which ones did you?
Um, three, seven, I think.
I think you said 17.
Yeah, 17. And I want to say 14.
14, 14, 17. Okay. And Teresa?
I said three, and I would also vote for seven and six.
And I'm sorry, last one you said?
Six.
Six. Okay. So it sounds like everybody, three, three's making it, it sounds like. Okay. So we got, oops. I don't know how to edit in Adobe very well. Don't, don't mind me. Will can remember three.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we have six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 14, 17. We have seven more. So we have two, or eight more. One, two, three. We've narrowed it down.
I think six got two votes.
Oh, excuse me.
At least. And seven got two votes. And 14 got two votes.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So, so raising children without worrying about state intervention, we think that's more important than raising children without worrying about your friend's family. I don't know what's going on with this. It looks like I highlighted the whole, how do you un-highlight? Oh, now I've done it.
It, it's okay. We're taking notes.
Good. Just, that's great. Oh, thanks for the grace.
I couldn't get my Outlook to work today, so that, that's why I was late. So I'm with you. Technology.
I'm going to bring somebody into our room that, I don't know if she was in a different room, but she got bumped out, so I'm bringing her in. It's Eileen. Let's see. We get.
Oh, being a foster.
Oh, and oops, I put her in a different room. Oh, well. Okay. So it's hard. I'm trying to multitask. I'm not doing a very good job at it, but that's okay. So we said three. We're all agreed on three, yes?
Yes.
And we said six, yes?
Yes. Seven.
No, guys. It's okay.
And we said seven. And we said 14. Those got multiple votes.
Okay.
But we could still talk about it.
So I really wish I could take off my little, oh, well, it doesn't matter. Um, I know it's not, I think about if you only got to have those four and the other ones were up in the air. As a white person, I'm, I'm used to all these things.
Yes. Like someone said, it's, it's the air we breathe. It's like, of course, of course, these things are a given.
Ty, what were you saying?
Um, that they're just so hard to pick. To like, see which four would be the most important for like, your whole life. It's a wild.
Yeah.
Number 12 kind of resonates with me also because I am such a relationship driven person that I do have friends who are, um, if you will, at a point or are in the closet. And they don't speak of their partners or relationships because, or, um, because they don't feel that it's a safe place to do so. And that just breaks my heart.
That's very common.
It is very common. I, I have a couple of people that are coming to mind that are in my world daily and whether we can't or they won't, they don't feel it's the place to talk about their relationship. And I'm sure it's out of fear.
So that's a, um, where I think it's really important to be intentionally welcoming. So if you say all are welcome, a lot of people say, yeah, everybody's welcome, except if I am
Right.
fill in the minority because people say things, but they don't mean it. So if you say specifically, all are welcome, including people of color. I almost said something inappropriate because I, it was really funny. It was, I'll just say it this way, um, all political parties. I thought one just got, I'm like, oh, yay. But, you know,
Right.
all, all genders, all, you know, any expression of anything, if you actually name the specific thing. Um, and so if it's a sign in a store or something at the bottom of a church program or whatever, but in, in your case, Donna, saying to your friend, where, wherever it's comfortable, but saying, you know, I'm open to talking to you, or I'm an ally of this. And you can sometimes weave it into your conversation. So it's not directly to them. Like, one of the things I say, uh, as an opener is I make sure when I ask people, like when I'm hiring people to work at my home, um, I'm asking them if they are LGBT friendly. And then I, it's like, cause I want to hire people who are.
Right.
Um, you know, and, and I'll ask, I'll ask questions about where they lie on there. And I've got my sign, my Black Lives Matter sign in my yard and I'll bring it up. And how do you feel about this? And if they're like, well, I don't know, or love the sin or hate the sin, or whatever, like, we're not going to do business. And I don't say it like that. But I say, I like to hire people who um, share these values, share these beliefs. And if they have curiosity about it and they're open to it and they don't know a lot about it, great. But if they're just outright, but by talking about that, that might help your friend feel more comfortable to know.
Absolutely.
So you could get, that's what I'm trying, it takes me a while, but you could give an example of how you are open to something and then they will know it's, um, open the door that it's safe to talk to you.
Absolutely. And I am that safe person. And I do have fantastic relationships with all the folks that I encounter, everybody. And, um, but I know that that resonates with a lot of people. It is their life. That's what they, so.
I have a question. Because we're talking about white privilege. I'm curious if the multiplicity of identities related to being a person of color and also LGBTQ. And I know there's a couple of other initials. I'm sorry. Um, so A and I, anyway, anyways, um, if that makes it more difficult for persons of color to be out than it is for a white person to be out? I, I don't know because I don't, I haven't asked.
Uh, I think for someone who is a person of color, obviously, and someone who identifies as like bisexual, I think can be very difficult for a person of color to come out as not straight or not in a normal relationship because of the likes, extra stigma that there is on that kind of stuff. And like, especially the black community and like a lot of like Latino communities. So it can definitely add, like, add extra stuffs where you like, don't want to like disconnect from your race, like your people, but then also want to be able to like freely express your relationships, but can't because of how your community might like react because of that. And it's, yeah, definitely can add a second layer of like an obstacle, I guess, lack of better words.
Yeah. And, and you're right, there's that intersection. And it's LGBTQ plus. Those are all letters.
Oh, just plus?
Okay. Jumble them too. And then, yeah. But, um, but it, yeah, when you intersect these different identities, it, it just adds an extra layer of that. Absolutely. There's, there's things that, yeah, people are afraid to, to be able to be who they are because they, I mean, it's, it's, you might be verbally assaulted, you might be physically assaulted. Um, you might lose your job because of it. We actually, actually, there's somebody on the call today on the event today, Marco. And I feel comfortable saying this because when he interviewed with RCC, he's an RCC employee, he said, he's Latino, first of all, he said, I'm queer. And pardon me, I'm not sure if he said queer or gay. I, but he identified as not being heterosexual. I'll just say that. So he's, and he's like, you got to know this about me. And he wanted to put it right out front because he's, he's, he's open, obviously. But, um, he didn't want that to become a problem for him down the road. He's like, if you're going to hire me, you have to know this. And it's, it's really brave of him to do. And.
Wonderful individual. I love working with Marco.
Yeah.
Such a great energy that boy has. Love it.
And there's strength in numbers. Last year for the Memorial Day parade that we have in Grants Pass, I put on my pride shirt when I got out of my car. And there's all the people downtown. I started like, oh, until I got with the group, I was worried. Like, what if somebody is just going to throw something at me because I'm wearing this shirt?
I remember your group. I was, I was one of the, I, I cheered loudly, but there weren't a lot of cheers around me. Um, yeah, no one was throwing things.
2019, 2018 was a hard year for the parade. Uh, 2019 was much better. This year we didn't have it, of course. But there was a lot of cheers along the parade route. It was encouraging. And we were handing out our rainbow stickers and I had people coming up to me afterwards saying, do you have more of those? Do you have more of those? So it certainly wasn't a hundred percent great reception, but it was marked improvement.
Great.
Yeah. Ty, which town do you live in?
I live in Medford right now.
Yeah. Donna, you're over in Medford, Jackson County, aren't you?
I live in Central Point, um, Sam's Valley, essentially by Table Rock Campus, about five minutes from the Table Rock Campus, under the Table Rocks.
Ah, and I know Teresa's my neighbor because we, I see you walking with your dog. What's your dog's name?
Dante.
Dante, Dante. And then Anne, where are you from?
Just outside of Rogue River. Y'all may have heard about Rogue River recently.
Oh, my gosh, you guys, I've got to get us back. It's over 10 minutes. Excuse me. Broadcasting message at all.
So, so do we have a consensus? I, I was, yeah, I was hearing, I think we added a fifth one, three, seven, three, six, seven, 12, and 14.
Oh, I'm, 12 does not have to be added. It was just something.
But I think Ty mentioned it too, didn't you, Ty?
Hi, would you like to, do we have a spokesperson? Ty, would you like to be the spokesperson?
I would not like to.
That's fine. Who would like to be?
I will.
Okay. Wait, who said I will?
Donna.
Great. Okay.
The what numbers?
We're closing in 11 seconds. Three. Go ahead.
Three, six, seven, 12, 14.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Let's see. I to, I was just having such a great time. In our, we were having such great discussions that we lost track of time. Um, show of nods, um, because I've got gallery view on and hands. Did you, anybody run out of things to say? Nobody ran out of things to say. Okay. Didn't think you would. So the extra time was good. So we have about 10 minutes here, uh, to wrap up. And let's go around and, um, each team leader will start with, with my group. Now I forgot who was Donna. I think Donna, Donna, will you go ahead and unmute yourself and share? I will. Yeah. Okay.
So we had great conversation, hence why we're late. And we actually added an extra one through our conversation. So our numbers were number three, number six. Do you want me to read the statement or just the numbers?
You know what? I can share the screen. Maybe read the statement. Let's read the statement.
Okay. So number three, being able to receive medical care, including emergency medical care without worrying about your identity affecting the quality of care that you receive. Number six, raising children without worry about state intervention. Number seven, feeling unthreatened and safe in, within your interactions with authority figures and police officers. Number 12, freely being able to discuss your relationship or relationships with others. And 14, applying for a job promotion without worrying your name or identities will hold you back.
Thank you, Donna. So our group is in the hole, $100. We're $100 in debt because we overspent. Next group. Let's have somebody, Tom, somebody from your group? You're muted. Let's unmute you.
So I tried to give that to somebody in my group and they all said, because I brought up the, the, uh, the, the screen share that I got to do it. So I tried to give that away. But so, so I'll share with you. We, we came up with, um, with four, but we sort of cheated too. We decided there were two that needed to go together, that they should have just been one. So we didn't pick five. We just, we just squished two together. So the first one we did was number three, being able to receive medical care, including emergency medical care without worrying about that your identities. The first one we did was number three, being able to receive medical care, including emergency medical care, without worrying about that your identities, identities affect the quality of the care that you receive. And we kind of felt that that could, could also just go together with nineteen. Being able to call, and access social services without fear of discrimination, because we think the social services also kind of is a health thing as well, that's part of, that's part of, of health. So that's, that's, that was our cheat, so three and nineteen, um, so I guess that, we can make that number twenty-one, um, so we chose that one. Then we chose seven, feeling threatened, um, feeling unthreatened and safe in your interactions with authority figures and police officers. Fourteen, being able to apply for a job promotion without worrying that your name or your identities will hold you back. And then seventeen, um, living openly with your partner. Were, were the ones that, that came up in our, in our group.
Thanks, Tom. Another group, Ernestine, is your group able to share?
Yes, Andrew, Andrew is gonna.
Hey, Andrew.
Thank you, uh, I've found myself in a similar situation as Reverend Tom, I think, with the, the screen sharing. So I had the pleasure of doing this activity with Reverend Ernestine, with Loreen, with Allison, with Leslie and Georgia, conversely, they had to put up with me for fifteen minutes, so here's what we ultimately decided, and I'm also glad to know that the, uh, taking liberties by combining two privileges is not unique to our team. Um, so let me refer to my document. We came up with, um, number three and number ten being sort of connected, so again, with medical and healthcare, being able to receive it. Uh, number one, and the quality of it, regardless of your identity, will safely be the best quality possible. Besides that, we also came up with number five, um, being able to interact with pop culture, books, movies, et cetera, where you share the identities of the characters, um. You know, this is an important component of your emotional quality of life, your self-esteem, your self-efficacy, so just being constantly aware that there are heroes and heroines with whom you can identify to, to get you through the daily grind is super important, we felt. Number seven, feeling unthreatened and safe in interactions with not only police officers, but authority figures, especially because authority figures is a very vast category, we felt like, and you're interacting with these individuals in so many facets of life, so wouldn't it be nice to be able to function without fear in that regard? And also we mentioned, I believe, number one, um, inheriting land from your family and ancestors after death. Uh, as Reverend Ernestine pointed out, there are some individuals and communities, uh, for example, in, in New Orleans, who just have lived in one place for so many generations, and don't have the written records, and legally, they're required to present them, even though they have true ownership, so again, just so difficult, soberingly difficult was this activity for us, thanks.
Thank you, okay, um. Let's see, who's, who's another group, I don't have a good way to find out who hasn't gone yet, who's, Jenny, thank you.
Um, I think I've self-appointed myself because of sharing screens, um, we had a really, a really great conversation, and we, uh, recorded, um, my group was Anita, Erica Geeson, who had to go to a doctor's appointment. Gary, Beth, and Kath, and myself. And, uh, we unanimously selected number seven, um, individually, we did it independently and then came back together, and number seven was our, our, the one that we all um, felt was one of the most important, which is feeling unthreatened and safe in your interactions with authority figures and police officers, and I'm seeing that's a pretty universal thing. Um, so that was our number one choice, uh, the second one was number three, and I would agree with, uh, many of the groups before that, that stated that we felt number three, number nine, and number ten were all related to healthcare. Um, and, and getting quality healthcare was why we chose number three. Um, and then our next choice was number one. Um, we had quite a bit of conversation about this, uh, which is inheriting land from your family or ancestors after their death. And part of that, uh, the reason we selected that one, uh, many of us chose it to begin with, but we really thought about how the system works, and how um, without the ability to do that, it, you just start like ten steps back, and being able to have, um, I don't even know if ownership is the right word, but to have kind of a, a stake, a claim, um, some power behind you, and this, um, I believe we talked about a safety net. And just knowing that we had people behind us and, and a support network to, uh, to survive the world. Um, and then our final choice, um, or did I already say it, let's see, no, our final choice is number eighteen. Um, which is being accepted by your neighbors, colleagues, and new friends. And, uh, I did list these in order, we had some other ones that really came, uh, to the top of the list, um, as far as being more unanimous. But eighteen, I think, had the most votes out of any of them, and we kind of discussed that that's a little bit, the language is a little loose behind it, um, what does being accepted mean? Is it, is it related to safety, is it related to access? Is it related to belonging? So those were our choices.
Thank you, um, I'm going to share my screen again here, and, because I'm realizing we're at one, and we're running out of time, but after this, if anybody wants to stand, we can, and Mary Middleton, if you're able to stay, um, I think I'm gonna have you talk about what your group said, so just briefly, um, in the meantime, between now and our next meeting, find a person in your life whom you can start this conversation with and ask the questions. And one of the things we talked about in our group was, how do you make sure you're welcoming to somebody if you don't know that they know, how do you let somebody know you're welcoming, and one of the ways is talk about something you do in your life, let them know what you're doing, and so they will know that you are an ally. Um, when you're talking with people, oops, remember, all of these things are very important, please always be respectful with, of people, no matter what they're saying that is rattling you. Um, have to say vote. Uh, get yourself registered if you aren't, go to our state's, um, website, make sure you are registered, ballots will be coming in the mail. Every vote counts, please vote, get a buddy. And then our next meeting is October twentieth, noon to one, same website, um, same links, and if you need to find me, go to RCC's website, and you can type in Sally Snyder, or you can type in Diversity Courageous Conversations, you'll find me. So now, I'm going to see if Mary's would like to share. If she's still here.
I, I have an appointment with a student in just a couple of minutes, but it's interesting, because we, we talked quite a lot about, um, three and ten as well, and we ended up choosing both of those, because we felt like, you know, just having access to medical care was not the same as being able to do that without worrying, and being able to have it in an emergency situation. Uh, so we, we chose one, three, seven, and ten, and then we were frustrated, because we, we, with all of those, those are all really important, basic rights. And, uh, but we, we didn't have anything that had to do with a job, and we didn't have anything really, um, I mean, we chose which one was safety. Feeling unthreatened and safe, but we didn't, you know, uh, have anything about acceptance or living openly, we felt like that you guys did a pretty good job here with this exercise of helping us unpack, uh, white privilege, in that most of these things we take for granted, and that, you know, we're, we're sort of born with these these privileges in the United States, and, um, and it was a good exercise, so, I gotta run, talk to a student, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary. I was muted, I don't know if she heard me, but I'll tell her later, is there, I know we're running out of time, is there anybody else who wants to share what they said in their group? If you do, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I can tell you what we said in my group.
Let's see.
We come up, like, we actually were so interested in talking that we were unable to come up, like, fast enough with four ideas. So I can tell you with the two that we came up, and the two that we were debating about. So, we decided on number ten, uh, which, sorry, I need to look at the list. Yes, so number ten, having access to medical care at any time, and number seven, feeling unthreatened and safe in interaction with authorities, and we were actually still debating between, um, no, between, we were, we were just talking about, uh, number six and number thirteen. No, I'm sorry, number eighteen, eighteen, being accepted by your neighbors, and number six, number six, raising your children without worrying about state intervention. So thus, we were actually so interested in the conversation that we lost ourselves in it, so I think that means that we were enjoying it.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, thank you for sharing. Anyone else?
Um, just quickly, we had, uh, number three, being able to receive quality medical care. Uh, number eight, raising children, about worrying about family, friends, and community rejecting them because of their identity. Number nine, being able to attain a job that pays health insurance to cover your medical treatments. And seventeen, living openly with your partner. Although we did agree that that was frequently, actually, a religious issue. It brought that up for a few of us.
Absolutely, thank you. I have lost track of how many groups have gone, are there any others? Okay, and I just want to thank you all too, because I'm, I'm learning how to do this, and in my head it goes one way, and then I get on screen and I freeze a little, so, thanks for, as I, I hope I get better, but, um, I'm glad we can come together and have these conversations. The number three, I think all of us went for that one, for sure, and I thought, gosh, what if I gave you all six hundred dollars to spend, you would have picked seven. Um, it's kind of interesting how, how we went about this thing, but, um, just, until, until next time, uh, until we meet again next month, keep these conversations going, please reach out to, uh, Ernestine, Tom, Lunta, Ryan, Jenny, and me, we are all open to this, and lots of us are, so, um, if you want help behind the scenes quietly, and you want to bring something up, we all encourage you to do so, all right, have a great day, everyone, thank you. And we still got Pat Bath, hi, Pat. You're muted, though. Let's see, you're still muted, and Janet.
I've been trying the whole time to get on, I, uh, I, I didn't know you had to go through Facebook, I thought there would be a link, I couldn't remember how to get on. I want to do two, when you're not, when you're not busy, I want to do two things, I know there's a way to put my name up there, instead of having it have my my email address, but I can't remember how to do that.
You know what, I can do it for you.
And then if it's, oh, okay, thanks.
I just get it.
Well, I was like, how did, how did that happen? You put rename, and it's like, Pat Bath. So Pat, I will send you, you don't have to go through Facebook, that's just where we have the link, but I will email you our link, so you have it.
Thank you, yeah, I went through the old epistle, you know, from the church, I went through other old ones from you or whatever, couldn't, couldn't figure out how to do it, so, has it been recorded, can I play back over what you've done and hear it?
It's been recorded, and, but I don't know what happens when we're in our breakout rooms, so, and that's where the that's where the meat of our meeting was, but I will get you that, it takes, it takes a little bit before I'm able to share it, it has to, um.
Okay, so we don't just go to the recording thing up there.
I'm going to, yeah, that's, actually, I'm gonna stop it from recording now.